Here.
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 Here. Don't you leave us to the pledge.
Would you lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Okay, we're going to suspend the rules in adjourned to the workshop setting. So, board, any motion or second to suspend the rules and adjourn to a workshop setting?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second, Ms. Kullivitz. Ms. Hutchison, please spell the role.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, we have two topics tonight we're going to cover. The first topic is all-day kindergarten, and the second topic is academic excellence work plans for K to eight, for grades K to eight. Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So just two quick reminders for the board. One, very specific, just a little tactical piece for the meeting. Please remember that even though you can't hear anything coming from the microphone because we don't have speakers inside of the room, the primary purpose for the mic is to make sure that the video from the meeting or anybody watching online can still hear. So if you wouldn't mind, when we get to the Q and A part, just please use the microphone, even though it's going to feel a little awkward because you're not going to hear it coming through the mic. So just for reminders, we move here into the Committee of the Whole. We have two Committee of the Whole meetings in the fall, obviously tonight, and then in October. Our focus always in the October Committee of the Whole over the two meetings has been our education services portion of the strategic plan. So tonight, you're going to hear Melissa in her portion of the meeting just walk through and give you an update on a couple of key elements in the education services work plan and answer some questions for you. And then as we get into October, we're going to deal with the data side of your dashboard because at that point, the state and school report cards will have been released, and so we'll have an outcome update. So I recognize that as we talk often about strategy, it's nice to be able to pair or measure the strategy with outcome, just the practical realities. We don't get that until the October meeting. So you're going to hear more about the focus for this year, and then as we come into October, you're going to hear some of the data elements. Second topic, though, for tonight that I'm going to transition into first is all-day kindergarten. So I think back in the spring of last year, the board asked for an update on all-day kindergarten, and so Dr. Sagi gave you an update at the time on where we were in terms of our current program, tuition-based, all-day program, kind of where those numbers have trended historically. And we agreed that once we got into this fall, we would bring an update back to let you know what this year's data looked like, both in terms of the trend. And then, right after, I think that last conversation, the state passed a law as well that indicated by 2027, all school districts would move to all-day kindergarten. So I want to give you an update, kind of identify, I think, some of the key elements you want to consider. No decision around that for tonight, but do want to understand at the end of the conversation tonight, kind of the interests of the board and how quickly we want to accelerate some of this conversation. So with that, Chris, I'll hand it off to you.
Yeah, good evening, members of the Board of Education. Excited to bring an all-day kindergarten report tonight to you. You're going to hear from both myself and Dr. O'Keefe. And there's three key questions we want to help answer for you tonight and hopefully spur on more conversation for you as well. First, what are the enrollment trends and parent interest levels in our all-day kindergarten programming? What are the programming and space considerations for implementing a potential universal all-day kindergarten program? And then, Dr. O'Keefe will hit on what are the financial considerations for planning and implementation of universal all-day kindergarten programming? A starting point for this is House Bill 2396 that came into effect. The long and the short of it is really beginning with the 2027-2028 school year. Each school board must establish a kindergarten with full day attendance. That is not a solely tuition-based full-day attendance. So it's a consideration as we look there. Enrollment history. So we're going to look at this in two ways. And as you look here from 2013 to 2023-24, where we sit, we've seen significant increases in all-day kindergarten. Now, as we looked at this last year, we saw that trend increasing, and as we now sit in this year, we were up significantly. 658 all-day kindergarteners to only 163 half-day kindergarteners. Our total enrollment is actually 852. That number, I know if you add 658 and 163, does not equal 852. I think it equals 831. But if you look at the asterisks there, I wanted to make sure we included all of our kindergarten students. We do have some programming, instructional-level programming for students that have individual education plans. But the main gist here is we've seen a significant increase in the all-day kindergarten program. If you look at that just from a percentage-wise, this is a different way of looking at it. We're at an 80-20 split now. So you see that trend just creeping up, creeping up, and we've really hit the accelerator, if you look at it from 2020 on to 2023-24, a significant split. Programming-wise, we're running more programs than we ever have in the all-day kindergarten program. We've got 31. Half-day kindergarten, we have 13, but I want to give a caveat to this. We have 13 offerings of half-day kindergarten programming, and I'll touch on this a little bit later in the presentation. At two of our schools, our interest was so low in the half-day kindergarten piece, we actually were strategic in working with families to either allow their children to weave into the full-day program and then leave halfway through the day, and/or some of those parents wanted a more robust experience, so they chose to premise a transfer to other schools. That's at Madison and Johnson, and the reason for that is the interest level, the amount of students that we had enrolled was around five or six students. And so looking at that, there were parents saying, I want more of an experience for my child. So just a caveat there, we actually run 11 half-day kindergarten sections or 11 half-day kindergarten teachers, but there are 13 offerings across the board. So just want to give that caveat as you look at those numbers. And at all but one school, we're running more than one program, running two or three programs.
Chris, excuse me, the all-day kindergarten, where it says like Emerson Two, is that two classes? Or what's the two?
Yeah, so two, yeah, there are actually two classrooms of all-day kindergarten as opposed to just one half-day section. Yep.
Thank you.
You bet. One of the things that we did a few weeks back is we reached out to our half-day kindergarten parents to really understand their thought process in choosing to enroll in half-day kindergarten as opposed to all-day kindergarten. And so we asked them two questions, and we had 117 responses, which is a pretty healthy response when you're talking about 163 students on a survey being sent out. So we first asked, why did you choose to enroll in half-day kindergarten instead of the all-day kindergarten program? And about 66%, almost two-thirds of our kids' parents said the 80K tuition was not the reason. They preferred their child attend the half-day instead of the full-day for other reasons. 34.2% said they did not want to pay the 80K tuition. Just to check and make sure that that was accurate, we asked the question really kind of in a different way, but really to make sure we were getting accurate information. We just asked, if all-day kindergarten were offered free of tuition, would you have enrolled your child, would you have enrolled your child in all-day kindergarten? And a 65-35 split, pretty close to what we saw on the previous question. And so when you look at that, that does tell us that there is certainly a contingency of parents that are enrolled this year in half-day that are doing it because that's what they desire for their child right now as the offering, and that the tuition was not a deterrent to them, as opposed to, there is a contingency of our parents, a smaller contingency that is saying tuition was a consideration in that decision. Programming considerations. So as we think about kindergarten as a whole, when you see the term class size up there, typically when we think class size, we're typically having a discussion around larger class sizes. As we have it right now, I put it in the frame of the viability or sustainability of half-day kindergarten at some of our schools. I alluded to a few of those situations earlier at Madison and Johnson when we had low numbers. We average, I think, about 12 or 13 kids across the board in our half-day sections, which is significantly lower than any of our other sections. I think our all-day kindergarten sections average about 20, 21 across the board. They can go up higher than that. And again, when you think about, we want lower class sizes for our younger students, but once we get significantly low and we get into those single digits, the social experience, the kind of that robust play experience, and all those different pieces that we know our youngest learners need at times can come into question. So it's a consideration for certain, as we have more and more interest in the full-day piece, and we saw that play out, not just at those two schools, but we have a few other sections that are running around eight, nine, 10 kids. Learning acceleration, you've heard Mrs. Murphy talk about that. We talk about that all the time here in all of our programming because really all of our work sits to support student learning. And as you know, and you'll hear about in the next presentation, we've brought on two new curriculums at the elementary level in both math and reading over the past two years. And with that, certainly we have a high level of expectation, high level of rigor, and instructional minutes that we want our classrooms to have. And there is definitely much more of a higher demand on the minutes to be delivered, the instruction to be delivered, in the half-day versus the full-day. And that is really just a time constraint to consider when we think about all we're trying to get in for our youngest learners. Another consideration in that is, is that we give our students, our kindergarten students as they're coming in in the early part of the year, something called the kid's assessment. And what it really measures and tells us is the readiness of kids coming to us, right? So really doesn't have much to do with what we've done with them unless they've been at Jefferson. But what we learned, at least in the group that's first graders now, they were kindergartners last year, that group that came in had significantly lower scores for kindergarten readiness. And what that tells us, when we see some of those more needs coming in, we're typically recommending a full-day program because we know we can have more time with our students to enrich, to intervene, and really give them core instruction. We don't know if that trend's going to repeat itself this year, but that is a trend that we saw. We know that we've been dedicating a lot of our resources in the academic and in the behavioral space to our youngest learners, so I would not be surprised if we didn't see that trend. But it's certainly a consideration when you think about the difference between half-day and full-day, and the offerings, and all the information we're giving you tonight. Specials, this is really just a reminder. Our students that are in the universal or all-day kindergarten program, in addition to PE, they get art once a week for 45 minutes. They get music once a week for 30 minutes, just like our first through fifth graders. They also get a full 30-minute lunch, a full 30-minute recess. So there's also that social experience piece of it as well, as opposed to our half-day kindergarten gets PE, but they're not getting the art, music, and the lunch recess. So a different experience. In the consideration, I want to use the word consideration, the consideration around the transition to being fully all-universal day, all-day universally, what kind of space pieces would we consider? One, we really do maximize our space at the elementary level. So while space is limited, we are not completely maxed out. We utilize every space, but not every space is a classroom. So if there is an open classroom, you'll typically see our multilingual teachers, maybe multiple multilingual teachers in there with walls set up, so they have separate instructional areas, reading and math coaches and specialists taking up those areas, resource teachers. We've also had an influx of special education instructional programs increased over the past years. We have to find space for those classrooms, and we're mandated to do that as well. So those are considerations that we've seen going up. I give that caveat to say, if we were, at this point, to transition to universal full-day kindergarten, we would have the space. And if I was asked that question over any of the years, with the exception of maybe the 2020-2021 year when we were low class sizes because of COVID, but at any other time during, between now and 2018, we would have been able to make that transition. We would have had enough space. It does not mean that we would have not had to, we would not be much tighter. We may be moving some of our ML teachers to smaller spaces. We may be compressing more teachers into classrooms, but we would have had the classroom space. If it were to happen this year, we would simply convert our half-day kindergarten programs or become full-day kindergarten programs. That's how the enrollment numbers shake out. It might not always be that way every year, but the sitting half-day kindergarten classrooms right now would simply become that extra section of full-day kindergarten you would redispers. And that's all you would be adding from a space piece, if that makes sense. I give the piece, though, to say, it's something we need to continue to monitor. If we go forward at any time with universal kindergarten, there may be specific buildings that have different space constraints or issues as opposed to others. So it's a strategic thing we monitor every year. And that's a whole piece we also bring into consideration with our increasing instructional-level special education programming. Our comparables, just for perspective, where are they at? Both Naperville 203 and Indian Prairie School District 204 are currently utilizing universal all-day kindergarten. They have been for some time. Barrington 220, Elmer's 205, St. Charles, they all still utilize a tuition-based all-day kindergarten model. Barrington charges about $3,700 a year for theirs. Elmer's, I believe, is about $2,700, and St. Charles is the lowest there at about $1,620. And then they also offer some reductions for free and reduced students. Our pricing sits kind of right in the middle of those, not at the super low end, but not as high as Barrington, a little closer to Elmer's at $2,900 right now. And as a reminder, we have reduced our costs over the past few years, from $4,000 to $36, down to $2,900. Turn over to Dr. O'Keefe. He's going to talk about some of the financial considerations.
Thank you, Dr. Sagi. Caveat right off the bat, these are merely estimates, no recommendations. Numbers will change. But to give you at least a perspective on what things could look like, we put together this data. So if you move away from a tuition-based program to universal all-day, obviously that tuition, the revenue side of that disappears. So based on our existing full-day kindergartners, we have 417 that are full-paying kindergartners, meaning they're paying the $2,900 for the year. We have 241 students who are free and/or reduced, and they qualify for a fee waiver, which reduces the rate down to $200 a year or $20 a month. That in and of itself is about $1,250 in revenue that would disappear. Those numbers, again, will change every year. That's more than $1 million. And if we're looking at consistency in terms of where our numbers are at, I think it's fair to say more than $1 million in revenue would come off the table. Revenue gain, though, something that we're waiting for our partners in the EBF team at ISBE to help with is, if in fact, the Board of Education approves a resolution and notifies the Illinois State Board of Education prior to March 1st in a calendar year, EBF would be updated for the school district, meaning our full-day kindergartners right now are only counted as a .5 FTE because there's a tuition-based program attached to that. That would be changed to a 1.0 FTE, and then that would be updated for the next fiscal year's EBF. In the conversation that I've had with the EBF team, since we're at the top end of Tier 3 in terms of our adequacy funding, we're at 97.3%, this would not be anything significant. So we're probably looking at low-end, six-figure increase on an annual basis related to this, not something that would completely offset the revenue reduction that we would be looking at in terms of the tuition-based program that we run today. One item, throwing it out there, it's not a recommendation, but certainly something that you could consider if you are looking at trying to balance the equation as it relates to moving to universal. All-day kindergarten is back for the 21-22 school year. The Board of Education approved a significant reduction in registration fees. If we look at our existing enrollment, and we moved registration fees that were in place for 2021, or that are in place today, back to the rates that were for 2021, we're looking at more than a $900,000 change in revenue based on the current landscape of students inside the district. So it's not something that you would need to do, but it's certainly something that could be considered as a part of this or any other conversation moving forward when we're talking program. On the expense side of things, so if you're moving from half-day teachers to full-day teachers, obviously that changes the equation in terms of FTEs. So using the existing staff plus 6% for next year, you're at about a $400,000 increase in salaries year over year between this fiscal year and next fiscal year. If things were to change, minimal increase on the actual medical and dental benefit side of things, but there are some different parameters in place for those that are halftime. So even though we're looking at about an $18,000 number, of all of these staff, there's only three people taking medical right now. They very well, we might have additional staff consider taking medical if they're a full FTE and they've got access to more board dollars than they do today. I would anticipate myself that that number would actually increase. That's the number that we would look at today. On the flip side, though, if we in fact were to move away from or almost move away from our midday transportation, there would be a cost savings on the transportation side of things. Right now, that's estimated at about $150,000 this year. That number would not completely go away because if we move to universal prior to 27-28 kindergarten, we in fact must offer a half-day program, and we must transport anybody that is beyond a mile and a half from their home school. Those are state laws that are in place that we would still have to adhere to. So if you're just using information that we have at our disposal now, between a reduction in revenue and increase in anticipated expenditures, you're at about $1,700 on a net program change. Again, that doesn't include any changes in EBF at the moment, but let's say that's $100,000, $200,000, not significantly changing that overall number. And if you were, again, to consider something in terms of a fee that has been rolled back, but you could move back to pre-existing numbers, that could help offset some of the costs. But as of this moment in time, with the information that we have, you would still be looking at an additional cost to move to universal all-day programming starting next year. And that obviously would change significantly on the expenditure side, if you're talking salaries year over year, just because of the salary increases that we have planned in the contract.
Just for consideration, key dates that sit in front of us when we think about kindergarten and decision points and all those different pieces. First of all, at the school level, at the building level, our buildings really start gathering parent interest in kindergarten, starting as we get closer to the winter break, so late fall/winter break. That registration starts kicking in right after the winter break. So we really start that process, and our kindergarten roundup meetings start happening in February, where our teachers and principals are bringing those parents in and talking about the programming. Dr. O'Keefe will be doing the updated five-year financial projections at the January COW meeting. Dr. O'Keefe, you want to speak about the notification to ISBE in March?
Sure. Just the benefit to doing this earlier is that instead of waiting for the state underneath the old model of how the state allocated funds per student, as long as we have a resolution passed and that information makes it into the ISBE coffers, as of March 1st, they will update the next fiscal year's EBF distribution. So that is a benefit to us. We don't have to wait for those funds any longer, but if in fact the decision is made after March 1st, we would end up having to wait for another year to catch up on that side of things.
Just conclude with our three guiding questions that we hoped to have answered or give you, hopefully maybe even potentially spur on more questions. So we'll stop this time and open up for discussion and questions.
Board, any questions?
If we go to universal all-day for the roughly, looks like 10% of families that would irrespective of cost want half-day, what would be the avenue for us to offer that? Would they basically attend an all-day kindergarten and exit partway through the day, or what would our plan be?
Well, I don't know specifically what our plan would be, but I can tell you the two options that I think you would consider within a plan. One could be what you alluded to, that students could attend a full-day, the full-day program, and leave halfway throughout the day. The other piece is you could look at potentially holding some half-day sections at specific places. Right now, the language holds that if you have, if you transition to a full-day, universal full-day kindergarten program, and you have more than 20 parents interested in half-day, you have to offer a half-day section at least. So that would mean, it might not have to be at their specific school, but you might say, hey, we're going to have a north side and a south side. If you have less than 20 district-wide, you can simply, you don't have to offer just a, you're not mandated to offer just an actual class. You can have the kids leave, because they would be sparse throughout 13 schools. Kids leave halfway through. And makes sense from a kind of efficiency standpoint, staffing standpoint. We don't know, 27-28, looking forward, if that language in the statute will remain around the 20 greater than, less than 20, and what kind of you're mandated to do.
And just out of curiosity, historically, when we had more than one half-day section at a given school, did we run an AMPM?
Yes. Yep. Yeah.
Thank you, Chris. And I'm Brian. Couple questions. So do we know with the 2027 universal all-day kindergarten law, will there still be that option for the half-day for the family that wants half-day?
There would be. And it would be, if they wanted it, they would have the option of leaving in our full-day program, right? So we'd run it and they could leave at 11:30, 12:00. There's some certain statutes we have to make sure that the kids are getting within there. That's actually what our comparables do right now in the Empreryan 203 that operate, those parents leave halfway through. If we, though, had a significant interest level above 20 students, we would have to offer an actual classroom of a half-day program.
Is that true, though, even when you get to 27? I thought in the language that was a little unclear.
It's unclear right now, yeah. Thank you. It's unclear in 27-28. We don't know if that statute's going to hold.
So that's what's required right now up to that transition point?
I think that's the part that I was trying to key in on. That would still be an option. Do we know if it would still be, so currently kindergarten is not required. Do we anticipate in 2027, with the implementation of universal all-day kindergarten, that that option is still there?
I have not heard that there would be any shift in the compulsory attendance age that would shift kindergarten any different than it is right now. So I've not heard any discussion around that. Again, I guess it would be, it will be interesting to see if that's the case. I mean, clearly, there is a driver around universal full-day, which obviously has to do with early learning and readiness for students. But I have not heard any specific discussion about shifting.
Okay. Thank you. In 2027, we anticipate that there will be state funding or some contribution from the state, or no?
I have not heard of any change on the state funding side. So I think the only change is when you make the move from a half-day to a universal full-day program. Again, currently, a kindergarten student, so in the evidence-based funding, let me just take one quick step back. So it used to be that state funding was based on attendance, not enrollment, and it was always in arrears. So you took the three best months of attendance from the previous year. That's what dictated how much money you got for the following year. EBF flipped that to where it's now based on enrollment, not attendance. So how many kids do you have enrolled for the current year and what are the characteristics of those students? Because not every student kind of counts the same from a funding perspective. So right now, a kindergartner counts as a half, because it's half-day, regardless of whether they're tuition-paying or not. When you move to universal full-day, they count as a whole. So from the state's perspective, we would potentially, in essence, pick up about 380 kids, right?
But we've committed the EBF funds to the lease certificate payments for Jefferson, so would we kind of pull that back out?
No, only a portion.
Just a portion of it.
Okay.
Anything that would happen related to this would be in addition to what we are collecting at this point in time.
Okay. Thanks.
Just on the attendance, sorry, not the attendance, the student headcount side of things, too. The way the EBF model works is it looks at three years of data. So they would go back and adjust three years of data specifically, and there's two points in time which we are required to report student headcounts. October 1st, March 1st, and then it's a blend, an average of those two specific periods. So ISBE would go back in the EBF formula, we've given them information already. Give them, they would then update that using the average between October 1st and March 1st of each of those school years, update that portion of the formula, and then once they're done running those calculations, give me a rough sense of what next year would look like if we were to incorporate it. The challenge, though, is next year's numbers are going to change, not only, not from our perspective from the last three years, but all the other EBF variables that are built into the formula do change. So even a number that they gave me now will not be the same number next year.
Sounds wonderfully complicated. So in 2027, so I thought I had heard inklings that the state might push it back or further out because of funding, or I could be confusing that with the universal breakfast-lunch program.
I think, so what I have heard, I think the issue is not around funding to actually pay for the kindergarten programming. There are a fair number of school districts that simply don't have the space. And so what the state is really debating, actually, Chris is sitting on actually a state task force right now through ISBE, through Luda. They asked if we would put somebody from the district on the task force just to work through some of those considerations for the state, because in, you know, at least for you as a board, you have a financial decision to make around this, but that decision is fully within your control, right? Like you are elected by the community to make this decision if that's where you choose to direct the resources or when you choose to direct it. Some districts are going to have to go to referendum in order to get the funds to build the classrooms. And I think the question that the state is really dealing with is how do you hold a district accountable to a timeline if they're not fully in control of all the variables in that timeline, right? If you had to go to the community and the community says no around paying to build classrooms, if you had to be in a district that, you know, Barrington is a good example. They can't do it without additional classrooms. Now, they have resources, so it's a little different scenario, but they've still got to manage where are they going to find a way to fund or construct the classrooms? And so that's, I think, what is potentially the extension point is not around the paying for the programming, but what if you're in a district that simply doesn't have the classrooms and has no capacity or access to resources to build them?
So regardless, in 2027, we will have this expense to be captured in our budget? So currently, the half-day teachers that we have are half-day. So we have 11 half-day teachers.
Unless, I don't know, if they're all truly half-day employees, some of them may be picking up another assignment in the other half of the day. So they may teach kindergarten in the morning and then fulfill another responsibility in the afternoon. So some of them may be full-time employees, but is that true, Chris?
There's everybody's half-day except for one specific individual, that's at Johnson, and they've got that different afternoon assignment.
I'm actually glad you asked that question. Again, not in the big picture, that's another consideration, because they're, some of our half-day teachers like to be half-day teachers as well, if it's into a personal scheduler situation. So you may lose a teacher or two as well if you ship the full-time when you do.
Yeah. I think that could be difficult or just something else to consider. So if we have, a question, but it might be more appropriate for Melissa, so I, I'll throw it out here, but just when you present. So bookworms adopting that, and it's at the kindergarten level, does that still fall under or where it covers common core? What's the?
Standards.
Standards, yes. Do you still have the standards that, like, are the standards going to remain the same for kindergarten if we are in an all-day kindergarten situation? Or will we go back to a little bit more developmentally appropriate, in my opinion, standards?
We utilize the Illinois Learning Standards, which are the common core standards. So that those same standards apply to our half-day programs and our full-day programs.
And then, just to Brian, so $725,000 times three years, where does that come from? Like, what do we cut to get that?
That would be part of the conversation we have to consider for the future, yeah. And certainly, I, we're already planning on having multiple projections so that we can walk through this in January. But certainly, if there is a true out-of-pocket cost, it's how do we offset that, knowing that there's a revenue loss with a greater expense? Don't have that answer for you today.
Thank you.
It is fair to say as well, I just want to mention, because similar to the conversation we had as we were talking about a few other financial elements last year, right? The budget you just approved and kind of remember the massive puzzle that is the budget, right? There are lots of levers that move up and down. So I think the question you ask is a really, really fair question. It is hard to say until we get a little closer to those financial projections. You're going to have a better sense of what next year's budget was going to look like already. So if, you know, based on some of the work we did, we did work hard moving into this year with the budget you just approved to adjust some headcount into this year. We absorbed some headcount to help preserve some of the resource in your budget. I think there's a chance you're going to have to do that next year anyway. So this is potentially, again, depending on when you want to perhaps make this adjustment, you know, it's just, it's going to factor into other decision points you're going to have.
Get clarity on the law. We have to offer full-day kindergarten, which we do now. Do we have to, is it automatically in 27, we can't charge a tuition?
Correct. You can charge a student fee still at that point as you charge for all of their levels, but you can't, it cannot be a tuition-based program.
So these financial considerations are automatically going to be impacting us in 27?
I have a couple of questions. The first one is not a fair question, but just curious if the, you know, pretty significant increase in enrollment from last year to this year, any sense of if any of that was related to the reduction in the tuition? I know that's not a fair question.
For the full-day program?
Yeah, because we went from 67% to 80%.
I would think David's probably got to have something to do with that. Again, I, you know, I think the question that really I appreciate, Chris working with the principals to tease out, is, you know, we've watched this trend for a little while. We've never asked right down to the student or the parent level, right? Like, we've not really fully understood this pie chart before, but this would suggest to you, when you look at that piece that's blue, we're getting much closer to being able to capture everybody for whom full-day is an interest, right? Like, trying to take the financial piece out of it. And just anecdotally, I think what we've heard for the last, I don't know how many years, is that's always been referenced as a major impediment for a lot more that want access to it, and I think you've come pretty close now.
For the comparable districts, any feel for what their, because they still have to offer half-day. Any idea where they are in terms of percentage that are all-day versus half-day?
In the ones that, in specifically 203 and 204 that are already doing universal? My sense, and now this is years back, but I'm also a parent in one of those in 203. My sense is that they have very little to, if any, students actually going half-day. I know that at times there are a few students who may start going half-day, and a few weeks into the school year, they end up transitioning because the child wants to, the parent wants to. So very little of any are taking that opportunity. And I don't believe either, I don't want to speak for 204, but I don't believe in 203, they have like a half-day kindergarten section at any of their.
And so if it, for those two districts, universal all-day, does that mean there's no tuition?
Correct.
Standard of registration fee, yeah.
And then?
And just as a reminder, two slightly different scenarios from a funding perspective, which really are impactful. So 204 is still a Tier 2 district. So they get substantially more resource per kid from the state, especially in that full-day piece. 203 is a Tier 4 district, so they're getting very little resource anyway, but their local resources are substantially higher.
The, this additional revenue consideration for registration fees, if we don't go down this route, it would seem like that might be a lever we're going to consider anyway. You know, in future budget years with, you know, what we just talked about.
The fee?
Where's this going to come from? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly something that the board could consider, not telling you you need to. And just a reminder, when we reduce those fees in 2021, we did it because that was year following the pandemic. And candidly, there were simply some services we weren't providing in school based on kind of enrollment and structure. And so I think the board felt that was a prudent and a fair response, right? Because there were some things that simply weren't being offered, and that was true of a lot of districts. They were not spending anywhere near 100% of their budget in that year, because there were just costs that weren't being incurred. As we came out of those, we've had the conversation once or twice, but the board has just never made a decision, even as we've returned to kind of pre-pandemic programming, we just haven't made the decision to return those fees. But that was a 50% reduction in all fees in that year.
And that's the 940, the 50% reduction? Yeah, the reason I ask that, I just a little bit wonder if that's kind of independent of the decision.
Yeah, it absolutely can be. Absolutely can be. I just.
I mean, I think it's a good point. I just wonder about.
That does not have to be tied to this decision on.
It's one of many choices, right? I think, you know, Brian and team will present us choices. We have, we don't have a space chat hurdle. We have a financial hurdle. Brian will give us choices. We, as a board, have to decide what those choices, you know, which path to take based on those options. What's your point? Right, 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 right. Just, you know, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. I'm just trying to get my, I mean, it does matter. I'm just trying to get my head around it. Is that really the right way to package it or not? Because, you know, is it really, and I would say the 725 is really more like 500, because we've got 100 for busing and 100 for EBF conservatively. So half a million, but that 1.6 becomes 1.4 if you take that 200 out. The decision is really 1.4 million and then separately, that's all in my, that's what I'm trying to grasp. And this, the thinking is if we're going to go this route, go the all-day route, universal route, we would do that ahead of 27-28 and stop charging tuition.
That's got to be a board decision. So we've laid out a path.
But that's kind of what this is based on. Well, I guess.
No, not necessarily, right? This is just helping you understand what you need to be aware of at whatever point you choose to, you know, to make the decision. There, again, there could be multiple paths, right? The, I will, will tell you if you kind of look, so if you look at what we've done over the last handful of years with the fee, I anticipated, we anticipated this, that 27-day was going to come at some point, the year 2027, right? And so part of the strategy has been, right, while you look at fee and make sure that it's appropriate, we have intentionally continued to bring that down, partially just because it's easier to absorb that budget hit over time than it is in one year. So, you know, if we had never changed that fee, right, this 1.2 million would be substantially higher, right, that you're looking at. And I mentioned that just to say, that's another path you absolutely could consider, right? Is if you don't think that the revenue gain from EBF is significant enough that that's a massive consideration, you could phase your way into this by just continuing to take that tuition and reducing it by 30% each year so that instead of absorbing all 1.2 million dollars in a year, you do it over a couple of years, perhaps in chunks that feel a little easier to absorb in the budget, right? Just things you could consider, not plan options that we can get to, but.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks.
Chris, can I ask one more thing? So is the data showing that the kids who are in all-day kindergarten are better prepared for first grade? Are they socially more mature? Like, what is the advantage of having all-day versus half-day?
Yeah, not having a specific numbers in front of me. I'm going to speak in some generalities. And knowing that we have looked at this in the past, but it has been sometimes some specific comparables. One of the things that we have seen is for our students that come to us with various risk factors, whether that be home poverty, multilingual, that a full-day program can have more significant impacts certainly there. I would say we have not studied that extensively, but I would also think about it from a programming consideration, the amount of time with our curriculums that we want to get in. Certainly, the students in the full-day are getting a more robust programming experience and instructional experience just from the minutes that they're getting in math and reading now.
My thought with that is that the three years that we have leading up to 2027, so those kindergarteners that we would have in that timeframe were toddlers during COVID. So they probably have some deficits, and so more could be better. However, However, I, in my head, I counter that with the thought that, are we going to be, um, expecting, like, are the expectations gonna be a little bit higher or a little bit even too much that we're causing stress on those kindergarteners? So, I, I, I think, obviously, like, the toddlers of COVID could be served, like, however best they're served is what I would want to do, but I also don't wanna have an initial kindergarten or initial school experience being stressful.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, and I think that's a fair consideration, it really is. And I think you could look at it from both ways, probably individualized almost to the student as well, because we know that there are some kindergarteners who come in where a full day is a lot, and we are even working with the family to say, hey, let's structure that day differently, or whatever it may be. On the other side of that, the full-day kindergarten day actually does give you the space in the day to build in breaks, to not go as quickly, to not feel as if you're getting as much in as well.
To have more, um, unstructured playtime?
Correct, yeah, there, there is some, there is those pieces, right, that you can allow
Cuz some of that, like, true toddler social, socialization, that play, that, you know, play-based learning...
Important.
Is something that was missed by those kids, so I, I think if we're just thinking of those three years, like, those three years are those kids who probably of any years need it the most, so...
So, is that an advocate, you're advocating faster, or you're just trying to figure it out?
I'm, I'm just trying to figure it out, I think I, I think I am advocating for earlier, like, I, because of that specific group of children that we're talking about, I just would worry that it's gonna be a lot for, um, I mean, it is, we're already doing it for eighty percent of the kids anyway, so...
And, and the majority of our students that, uh, do come with us with the various risk factors that I alluded to, the majority, not all, but there's a, are in our full day as well.
Are in the full day.
Yeah, that doesn't mean that all of our all-day is at risk, what I mean by that is if we take our students that may have potential risk factors, IEP, multilingual, potential, uh, home, home of below the poverty line, um, the majority, or there's a higher percentage that would be going into full day as opposed to half-day.
I think where I'm, my head is, is that if as a district we value this, like, we think all-day kindergarten is the better option, then I don't think we should be charging tuition for it, if that makes sense, because I do think that's an impediment to families, if we think that, like, if we're at that space.
We're already offering full-day kindergarten to everybody who wants it, right? So, it's not an issue of doing it faster, we're already offering it.
Right, I'm saying without, but if we, if, if we think that it's valuable, why are we charging for it?
Cuz I understand this conversation, we have two decisions as a board, we have two decisions, do we wanna reduce or eliminate the tuition before twenty-twenty-seven, cuz it's gonna go, go away anyway in twenty-twenty-seven, so that's one decision, and then two is, do we wanna try to recapture that loss by returning some of these registration fees? To me, it doesn't seem like we have any other choices to make as a board, because we're already offering full-day kindergarten, and we don't have space issues.
Right, I think I'm just, I'm trying to process, like, that's what, um, two-point-one million dollars over three years, I'm trying to justify it, like, in, in my head, and I think if we, if we, as a district, say we value it, then I don't think we should be charging for it, cuz it is an impediment to some families.
Well, that's decision point one.
So, there's, there you go. So, yes, Rob, I'm advocating for that.
I understand now, yeah. Yeah, I, I think, I think that we have work to do on, on, you know, as looking at the options and making decisions about it, where there's a lot of different choices we could make on how we get there.
But we only have till March.
That's right.
And just to, there is a reduced fee for our students that would be considered below the poverty line as well, to, to do, you know, attempt to remove that impediment, we have two-hundred-and-forty-one students actually paying that significant reduced fee.
I had just one question on, on the consideration of, for the chunk of students where the fee is the barrier, how quickly do we remove that? You mentioned that we do that kindergarten readiness, and the first-grade class last year, their results were dramatically different. Do we have any data on this year's kindergarten class, if that trend continued, on how quickly we should move?
The kids' assessment is administered within the first forty-five days of the school year, so we have not collected that information yet, um, but we do administer early reading and early math three times a year, and so we do have data on our kindergarteners, um, that just, that testing session just wrapped up.
It just feels like the school year's been forty-five days.
So, just doing the math, the thirty-five percent of the half-day kids who don't choose full-day because of the tuition, that's fifty-seven students, that's what the math worked. So, that'd be fifty-seven additional half-day students, if we pulled away the tuition, they would go into full, go into all-day kindergarten, that's the number. According to one-hundred-and-sixty-three current half-day students, and thirty-five percent of those, that's fifty-seven.
Right, but we would also be paying for all those who are already paying, is that, am I missing the point?
Well, that's, that's decision point one that I articulated, is do we reduce or eliminate the tuition before twenty-twenty-seven?
What do you think, Brad?
What's that?
What do you think, are you?
What do I think?
Yeah.
I think it's much more complicated for us to see how it fits in all the other puzzle pieces.
I think every year, our, our budget, there's, there's puts and takes every year to change on our budget, right? And, and so, you know, we're having a little bit of a theoretical conversation versus fact-based, and so I, I get a little bit, I wanna get a little closer to the, the choices we have and see what those are, those trade-offs, um, cuz some may be unpalatable to us, right? So, we have to figure out what those are, you know, that's, that's my, if I look at it.
Two, two more questions. So, in addition to the six-point-five certified incremental FTEs that are noted, is there no additional support staff requirement?
No additional support staff? Yeah, our aides are, our aides are allocated based upon the individual education plans that our, uh, that our students have, um, so I would not see an, an increase there. There would be potentially a minimal increase, um, in art and music, because you would potentially be adding a section at every school of that. Um, however, I do the scheduling for our art and music folks, and if that was to be this case this year, we wouldn't be adding FTE, it's, that, that schedules a puzzle as well, and we would just schedule different pieces to make that, but it is a slight consideration that there could be a little financial consideration there with support.
When even for like the IEPs, if today they're supporting a student that's in half-day, and tomorrow that student's in full-day?
Most IEP kids are in full-day instructional program, I believe, I don't wanna...
Yeah, there is students with IEPs in our half-day program.
I think it's by parent choice, or...
Yeah, but, but still, their IEPs are being carried out based upon their need, right? So, no matter what the need is, uh, we're writing those IEPs to meet the kid's individual need, not the day. It's, it's a little hard to speculate depending upon the student need, there, there is a potential that a child may need additionally supporting a portion of their day, so there's a consideration there.
I think it's fair to say that whatever, whatever that impact is, it truly not gonna be significantly material in that number, right? I mean, I think it's there, but it's probably not gonna shift that variable significantly.
And then, um, assuming a lot of districts make the choice to defer implementation until required by law, has there been any discussion at a, like, ISB level around labor market being able to bear that increase? I mean, we're talking six-point-five FTEs, multiply that times eight-hundred-and-fifty districts, what's the point of view there?
Yeah, I, I don't think you're gonna have a labor market issue not in classroom teachers, uh, I, I really don't, I, I think, I think you're gonna be okay, cer- certainly in our labor markets, I, I didn't even necessarily view like statewide as, as one labor market, I think there are regions within the state, and each kind of has its own variables that, that impacts it, I don't think you're gonna see that here.
So, just help me briefly understand why, when we've talked a lot about long-range concern over potential teacher shortages?
Yeah, um, fair question, Eric, so, uh, we, we have concern over teacher shortages in specified areas, more significantly than others, right? So, you, you post a job for an elementary teacher, that still tends to be our most significant labor pool in terms of applicants to positions higher.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Board?
John? Just noting that, that roughly thirty-four percent of people that don't send their kids because of the tuition, and if it was free, there's still the same thirty-four percent, which says to me that the tuition isn't really the factor there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have two survey data points, right? I think we have the, I, I use those loosely, I guess, um, and it's hard to, it's hard to know what their, the parents are thinking, right? We don't, we know, we can infer a little bit, but not a lot.
If they're the same, if they're the same thirty-four percent, it's, they don't wanna send their kids because of the cost, but if it's free, they still wouldn't, so...
Right, right.
But there's sixty-five percent who would send.
But they already do.
Of those that, that don't go?
Of those that don't go, it's sixty-five percent would go if it was free, am I...
No, the other way around.
Other way around. Ah, okay, so thirty-five percent.
Yeah.
So, that, okay.
It's fifty-seven students, our decision to reduce, to eliminate tuition impacts the thirty-five percent, based on current half-day enrollment, it's fifty-seven students.
Well, that's fifty-seven students, I know, and, and I've heard in the community, and there's a lot of disgruntlement that we don't offer it already, like, I think...
That we charge for it.
That we charge for it, yes, correct.
So, so I, to me, it's, 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 it's kind of what Brad said, where it's, it's about, you know, when do you stop asking for tuition, right? The timing of that, and what are the implications of that? That's kind of the, that's why I asked about the acceleration question, and, and so once we, once we know more of the choices we have, we can make that decision about acceleration and see, you know, see what those choices are. Sorry, John, I cut you off.
The other question I would raise is relative to transportation, it would seem to me that there wouldn't be that much of a change in transportation, if you still have people wanting to pull their kids out in the middle, or are they on their own at that point? Getting, getting their kids home halfway through the day.
Yeah, so, um, again, I, I can, I can tell you, try to answer that question based on what we understand right now, this is a brand-new law that just passed, and so I think it, it is a little bit unclear. It sounds like we will still be providing some midday transportation, not likely the routes that we're running. Right now, typically, we have a midday route at every school that has a half-day program, so assume you have eleven, let's call it, uh, bus routes, right, that, uh, are right now only taking kids home in the middle of the day, you're probably not gonna have eleven. So, if you have to offer some transportation, depending on how we structure the sites, you might, you're gonna still have a couple potentially, but, but probably not eleven.
I'm just thinking that we probably, there's not a lot of savings to be added.
Oh, I, I don't think it's materi, that's why I think, you know, to, to the point, that's, you know, Brian doesn't have an exact number up there, but I, I don't think that's gonna be a massive shift, that, again, there'll be some money, but, yeah.
One more, are all of our half-day kindergartens AM then?
Yes. Yes. And, and a la- last little piece, I guess I will, will just, uh, mention, like, that is increasingly, though, managing at the beginning of the year, kind of how you plan for those sections, that, that is getting increasingly complicated as some of those numbers get very low. So, you know, there, there was a bit of scrambling at the beginning of this year, as, you know, Chris and the elementary teams were addressing a few of those sites with really, uh, low numbers, and, and I think parents responded well and were supportive to the options put in front of them. That's not to say that's always going to be the, the case, so what was, was managed well and easily this year, may, that may not be the case moving forward, right? So, I just, I mentioned that to say, um, at some point, it would probably be better and preferred to have a proactive plan and know what the plan's going to be moving forward, rather than spend a couple more years just kind of going, well, you know, let's see where the numbers bear out, and then try to, to problem-solve those scenarios at some point, we're probably gonna need a plan, but, but, you know, that's a, that's a financial element. So, I think last little pieces for today, Rob, the question is, I mean, I, he would just say, it's if, uh, if there is interest in exploring and understanding those options now, we do have to hit the accelerator on that discussion point, right? Just knowing where we are and a few of those, those key dates, we're already into October, so, um, i- if this is potentially a consideration even as early as next year, we've gotta hit the accelerator on at least putting those options together for you, so I think that is kind of the interest at the end of today, is just knowing in, in, in general, what's the board interest on really potentially hitting the accelerator and understanding those options? Yeah.
Anyone?
I'd say yes, I'd say yes, explore, I'd like to explore it deeper.
Dave, okay, Eric, yes, more?
Yes, explore it. But I wouldn't be a fan of eliminating all the tuition at one time, I'd rather gradually scale it back to twenty-twenty-seven.
Explore with a caveat that you guys have the bandwidth to do.
I missed what you said, with the caveat of they have the bandwidth.
Big time, right, with, yeah, thank you for recognizing that. Chris doesn't, doesn't have anything to do, he's got some time.
I'd, I'd like to explore it further, but I also see where the legislature has put a date out there, and is there a reason to do something different from what they've proposed?
And to answer that, I would just like to advocate for the toddlers of COVID, like, I mean, that, you know, if maybe if, if that wasn't the scenario, then I probably, I might think differently, but, but we're seeing it in early intervention, like, we are bombarded with numbers, and they're coming, so...
My, my sense of the, of the legislature and the, and the law that passed, if, if they could have passed that law with an implementation date for next year, I think they would have. I think that implementation was really set understanding just the complexity of where this sits around the state and...
Space requirements.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, our second topic is academic excellence, Dr. Schuler?
Mrs. Murphy?
All right, uh, good evening, it's always a pleasure to have the opportunity to provide you with some information about the work that's being done, um, in the Ed Services Department around academic excellence, if you don't mind going to the very start of the slide deck. So, while the, um, slides are being pulled up, I'll, I'll just get started. So, this is a focus on K-eight programming, so in the Ed Services Department, oh. I forgot.
We got a new A and B guy.
Thank you. It usually is always like up for us, yes, I apologize. I need learning acceleration for working the computer. All right, so, um, in the Ed Services Department, we've really been focused on three core areas from the Vision 2026 Strategic Plan, and those are expanding the post-secondary opportunities, learning acceleration, and balanced assessment, those are our three anchors, but then the work with Portrait of a Graduate and professional learning are connected to all three of those. Tonight, I'm spending time on learning acceleration and balanced assessment. So, the, I just have two guiding questions for us tonight, it's about first and foremost, how are we continuing learning acceleration and balanced assessment work with literacy specifically is our first one. With, um, learning acceleration, we had, came up with these four core actions that guide all the work that we're doing, you have seen these before as a board, and so what I'm gonna tell you tonight is about what the work, um, looks like that go with every four of those. So, first and foremost, in terms of literacy, I'm gonna take you back to twenty-nineteen, one of the very first presentations I did to the board was about this study that is with EAB, we started partnering with EAB, a research group back in twenty-nineteen, and, um, we learned about this study narrowing the third-grade reading gap, this was actually one of the very first conversations I had with Dr. Schuler when I came on board, we brought EAB out, we learned all about the importance of foundational skills and str... instruction, and the critical role it plays. And so when we say foundational skills, just a friendly reminder, these are the foundational skills. Print concepts means that a early childhood student can understand that a book, a sentence goes from left to right, they know how to hold a book, they understand words and spacing in a sentence. Phonological awareness is about hearing, identifying sounds, and manipulating sounds, critically important for an early reader. Phonics and word recognition does span the whole elementary years, we're going to talk about that, and then fluency as well. And from EAB, this was like the core piece we walked away with. We, we learned that the research says you have to have a small group instruction around foundational skills that are targeted to what students need, and you need to use high-quality instructional materials to do this. And so the good news is Bookworms meets that criteria. This is something that really excited us about the materials that we piloted and ended up selecting. And so foundational skills in Bookworms has two parts to the day. First and foremost, every single day, our students get whole-group instruction on grade-level standards that are those foundational skills, and then they get a small group time that is targeted to what they need. You see the little image there, because that represents the three blocks of learning that our students participate in, in Bookworms. Each of those are forty-five minutes in length, so two of those blocks contain those foundational skills. Here, you're going to get a little snapshot into what it looks like in our classrooms. So this is an image from kindergarten. On the left-hand side, you see the teacher materials, and on the right-hand side, you see the, the student workbook. Our students, all the board-approved, the purchase of workbooks for our students for ELA, they have four workbooks for a year, and their phonics materials are in these workbooks. And so in kindergarten, they are working on phonological awareness and letters and sounds, that is so important for kindergarten, and there's also handwriting in those workbooks. And then first grade, the same setup, you see the teacher lesson on the left, the workbook page on the right, and it just, the, the concepts increase in difficulty, we're getting more sophisticated phonics. Here's what I'll say, I had the pleasure of going over to Lowell the other day, I went into a first-grade classroom, and I saw the whole group phonics lesson, and then I went over to the first-grade classroom, and I saw whole-group phonics instruction. What was really cool was that it was the same exact instructional routine, the content just looked different. And I tell you this because it's really, really important for our kids that have difficulty with these kinds of concepts, to understand the routine every day, and it's the same, especially from one year to another, makes learning the concept a lot easier, and that's what the research shows with Bookworms schools. Here we have second grade, again, teacher lesson on the left, and workbook page on the right, and again, we are getting more sophisticated with our phonics, and we're really working on the spelling. And that instruction for phonics does not stop in second grade. In third through fifth grade, the focus does shift down to, to vocabulary instruction, but also working on phonics, because we're talking about syllabication. Here's a picture from Lowell, I snapped this in a fourth-grade classroom, you see the vocabulary words that are hanging up in the center for that week, and you see all the ones on the right, that they are studying for that whole unit. And then the, all the images on the left are all about the syllabication rules, that are really important to be, be able to spell multi-syllabic words and decode multi-syllabic words. And then you'll see the workbook page, where you see the word in the center there, and they're really diving in deep in terms of like, you know, subject and verb, and they're writing, you know, sentences to it. So core action number two, providing our teachers with professional learning to support Tier One. I remember, Julie, this was a part of your questioning when we made the adoption, and so here are some of the plans that we have in place. So we always have three pillars of professional learning for our teachers, training, coaching, plan. Training, we've done a lot of training, even starting last year. We started in the spring, we worked with all of our staff, we worked more deeply with our K-two staff, because they're in full implementation. In August, we had training for our three-five teachers on the word study, because that whole idea of syllabication is new for our thirty-five teachers. So we really needed to help them understand that. Just last Friday, we had great DI, like, we're going to talk about the DI block here in a minute, differentiated instruction block, we had that for our K-two teachers, and future trainings are going to be determined by our coaches. Actually, we were with our principals yesterday, and they already identified something that they want for January. Planning, we have found a great success with allowing our teachers to meet with their coach during the day, to have extended planning time, and so we've provided subs for staff to be able to meet with their coaches and really dive into those materials, and get some longer sessions for thinking through the materials. And then coaches, we do have a one-point-oh coach at every one of our thirteen buildings to support this work. So let's talk about our coaches. What do they do? Boy, so much, I don't think these, this one slide captures it all, to be honest with you. I mean, they're in classrooms, they're providing professional learning, they're looking at data, they are working with small groups of students, they're giving teachers feedback, and the part that is most helpful, honestly, in my role, is they meet with me every single week. So every single Friday, we're in this room together, and that helps me ensure I have a really good pulse on what the, this looks like for our staff, they give me feedback, and they ensure there's continuity in that implementation by coming together on a weekly basis. All right, core actions three and four, I'm combining because they go hand in hand. So using assessments for learning, and focusing our interventions on students most in need to create instructional coherence. So this is what is, I think, is one of the most exciting parts about Bookworms, is what's called this differentiated instruction block, and this is an extra set of lessons, you purchased these for all of our teachers to have, which has all of the lessons for their differentiated phonics instruction, and we're doing this in K-two this year, and this is really considered like a, a, an intervention for our students. This is the methodology, and here's what this looks like. This is called the staircase of proficiency. And so the bottom row are the lessons that are intended for kindergarten, this, the row above that are the lessons for first grade, and then above that is for second grade. And so the way it works is our teachers give the students an assessment, and let me take first grade as a really great example. So at the very beginning of the year, our students are supposed to be in that blends and digraphs box, that's, means you're an on-level first grader. So you are given the assessment, and then we decide what set of lessons you get. Each box is a different set of lessons. So if you're an on-level first grader, you're going to get the blends and digraphs lesson. If you are working above level, like, you really have those, those foundational skills down, then we're going to move you up to the higher lessons. And if you happen to be a student that didn't have those foundational skills secure, we're going to dip down, and you're going to get those lower-level skills. So I say this is really, makes our programming different and unique, because our kids are all getting grade-level phonics, and then they're getting whatever they need every day. So I pretty much explained all of this, I'm going to go through this. Here's what's exciting, too. This is a game-changer for us. We are monitoring their progress using assessments in this book every three to six weeks. So every three to six weeks, we're taking a dipstick, and we're figuring out, did they get it? And we can move them to the next set of lessons. Did they not get it? They're going to repeat those, that set of lessons again with some modifications. So this, this is a really big deal, and when we talk about using assessment to prioritize learning, this is a slam dunk for that. This also fits into when you hear multi-tiered systems of support. We've talked about that here at the board level before. Multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS, is a framework to know what kinds of instructions students need. So Tier One at the bottom, all students get Tier One instruction, that's your regular third-grade language arts instruction. Tier Two means you get something very targeted for what you need, and then the top tier means, you know, you need something very specific, because you have big holes and gaps. We use our FastBridge data to determine what our students need. And so at the beginning of the school year, this is a really important metric to know where our students are coming in. This really goes to some, like, the conversation before, Mrs. Blatner, you were having, so a healthy school system has eighty percent of their students that are scoring in that green area, and then they say school systems typically have between ten and fifteen percent of students that need something very targeted and specific, and then you do have about five to ten percent of students that need something more significant. All right. Three of our schools used these materials all last year, and with a whole grade level. And we really were, are looking at their FastBridge data, we are looking at all of it, but we really studied those three schools really closely, because, and here's some information I think will excite you here, it really excited me. Let me explain it to you. So I'll orient you to this slide. Three schools, one non-title-one school, and two title-one schools, okay? So then you've got the cohort, meaning it's the group of kids that we're following the data on. Then we had our fall of last year's data and our fall of this year's data, okay? So the non-title school, this was a group of second graders, they're now in third grade. At the beginning of last year, seventy-eight percent of them were considered like that healthy Tier One. This year is testing as third graders, it's eighty-four percent, meaning we've hit that mark of like, yep, we're right, we are where we want to be. The next ones are really exciting. Title-one school, group of first graders did these DI lessons all last year. At the beginning of last year, they started at sixty percent in that healthy Tier One area. Again, this goes to your point of those, those kiddos that are coming to us after those pandemic years had some, they really, those foundational skills were difficult to learn during that time period, right? So sixty percent, we were all over this at the beginning of the school year, looking at this and knowing we had to intervene. And so the school got on that, and you're going to see fall of this year, as second graders, it's seventy-five percent. Yeah, it's really exciting. The last two rows are the same school. So that school did this in first grade and in second grade, and you can see the impact, really, really powerful, the impact that this had last year, and it's going to have in all of our buildings now. Okay, so preparing for full implementation with third through fifth grade, because we are all in those three blocks for K-two, but third through fifth, it was just the one block we were asking our teachers to jump on board with, which is the shared reading block. That's where those phonics lessons are, and whole-group reading of not, you know, novels and informational text. Next year, the third through fifth grade teachers will be implementing the DI block and the ELA block, which is writing. Our pilot teachers did not recommend that we adopt the DI portion for the intermediate grades. They, they gave us feedback, and they felt like it was okay, but they wanted to go back out and look at a little bit more about what else we could do in terms of the materials for that block. They really liked what we had piloted with American Reading Company, the supplemental resource that went with that. And so we're going to bring that group of people together again this year to talk through that, before we go to full implementation, about what exactly are the best resources to utilize as we move forward with the DI block next year. Pace, we also had three pace specialists participate in the pilot last year. They came to the end of that pilot, you may remember, we did talk about this, I remember Mr. Jerby asked me a question about this, actually, with the adoption. We got to the end of that pilot, and they said, you know what, we want to keep meeting and discussing that. So those thirteen pace specialists are coming together with us, they actually met with Dr. Moran on Friday, they're meeting with Dr. Slaggy and I next week, and we're working through, like, what does the programming look like with the adoption of Bookworms? And they actually are investigating some other instructional materials, too. Dr. Moran's worked with them on that same supplemental resource that, from American Reading Company, the toolkit. She worked on orienting them to that, because that was something those pace specialists said they wanted to investigate further. So you've seen this image before, this is our framework for curriculum implementation. We are also doing work with middle school, but we're all the way at the far end. And so that work started last year, and on your work plan, it says, we're going to finish up this phase-one work for middle school this year. This is the longest part of the work, honestly. Last year, we came together as a steering committee, three teachers from every school meet, have met with me five times, we studied the shifts that should inform our instructional vision, we established an instructional vision, and this year, we already have met once, we're coming back together, they want to start reviewing materi, high-quality instructional materials, and come to a point where they're trying out some materials to pilot. All right, transition to math. So what are we doing with mathematics in our work with learning acceleration and balanced assessment? Again, the same four core actions guide our work for mathematics. So number one is like, check, we're done, you adopted high-quality materials, K-8. We have, and this is exciting, we have instructional coherence from kindergarten to eighth grade with the same set of materials with IM. And so this is really exciting. The only caveat I did put up here is students who are taking the algebra and geometry in seventh and eighth grade utilize the high school materials, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. But illustrative math is a high-quality set of materials for so many reasons. It's aligned to the standards, it has complex problem-solving, the common assessments, we're going to talk about that, aligned to the Portrait of a Graduate, we're going to go with that, and it has this guidance to support our multilingual learners and our students with disabilities in mathematics as well. So we are into year two, K-five, and somewhat year two in a little bit of a way for some of our pilot teachers at the middle school. And so, again, I, when I had that visit over to Lowell, I heard about a lot of successes, and then I, I did a lot of communication with the rest of our math coaches to find out in our weekly meetings, what's going well so far, and I have a lot to share with you that's exciting. I heard a lot about students making connections between last year and this year. So when I was over at Lowell, I was in a second-grade classroom, it was the very first day of a unit, and I watched five children present solutions to a problem that all represented what they had done last year, and it was like seamless. It was, it was truly phenomenal to, to watch, and it was day one of the unit, so that was really exciting. I've heard from principals and coaches and teachers say that the students are more engaged and more willing to answer questions. The lessons are taking less time, because students understand the routines. So again, hearing from our teachers, every IM lesson starts with some instructional routines, one's called Notice and Wonder. Our kids know it, and they're just jumping right into it, instead of us having to teach what that is, and there's like a little bit of confusion, right? Staff are reporting having much more success with lessons that were challenging last year. So my favorite story about this is I was over at Monroe, seventh-grade teacher, and I clearly remember last year having that conversation with this teacher, and she was really feeling like it was difficult for the kids, because they were jumping in just in seventh grade for the first time with, you know, these instructional materials, and I saw that same teacher just a little bit ago, and she stopped me, she goes, oh my gosh, total. And I saw that same teacher just a little bit ago and she stopped me, she goes, oh my gosh, total difference this year. She said, it is really wonderful how that transitioned from all of the sixth graders doing the lessons last year and what a difference it has made this year. And then lastly, our staff are definitely more confident and they feel more organized. And that's that little picture I have up there, the bookshelf with the materials. One of the coaches sent that to me because she said, they, remember, we've talked about the materials a lot. We heard a lot about the materials, right? They, they have their systems now. You go in their rooms and they know how to organize everything and they feel really good about it. The picture at the top is first grade. This is like the second week of school. And the activities, because of that instructional coherence, the kids jumped right in. And as someone who taught first grade in the past, the very first few weeks of first grade are, they're tough, you know? It's a big change for kids. The fact that kids jumped in and did this, these activities right away and the teachers stood around and were just amazed at how easily this went. It, it was really, it's really exciting. This is really cool to share with you as well. So Five Essentials is the survey that all of our fourth graders and up take once a year. And it reports out on all sorts of items about the student experience. The item that I'm pointing out to you right now now sits number one rated by our students as is math instruction. This went up 18 points in one year. Our students, that is now number one, math instruction. And it falls in this ambitious instruction category. And if you can see the really small print, it, you can see that the questions the kids are asked are just such a match to the learning they're having. And that, it's, it's really neat to see that our students are saying yes.
Can you clarify that? I'm, I'm clear on kind of the question and the answer and how to interpret that.
So I'm going to look at the small print here so I can really give you more specifics. So our students get questions like, how often do I write sentences to explain how I solved a math problem? Or how often do you explain how you solved a math problem in class? How often do you discuss solutions to problems with other students? How do you apply math solutions to outside of school? They've been asked those questions repeatedly for years. So this year, this particular group of questions come out at 87% of our students saying that is very strong for them. It's actually the number one rated area from Five Essentials, went up a significant amount. Does that make, does that help?
It says kind of my question is what's the basis for comparisons? When you say went up a significant amount?
It was over last year's results on the exact same survey. Yeah. Same group of students except for graduating seniors and now new fourth graders. So. We are continuing to provide professional learning for our staff. Even though this is their second year, we're still continuing to support them because we know this was a big lift. So it's the same three pillars. Our middle school staff participated in professional learning last Friday from illustrative math. We continue to offer those planning sessions for our elementary staff. Our middle school have department meetings. That's a really nice structure for them to collaborate, six, seven and eight teachers with their coach. And then as a reminder, again, the board supported the increase in coaches for elementary and middle school. And so each of our middle schools has that 1.0 coach that has played an instrumental role in supporting this work. And the focus this year for our coaches is on collaboration and communication. And so I just want to remind the board that when we think about Portrait of a Graduate, we're not thinking that, about that as something separate and different. We're thinking about that within the context of what we're already doing. And that was a lot, a strong driver for selecting illustrative math. It's so tightly aligned to our Portrait of a Graduate skills. And we know with illustrative math, every lesson requires our students to be strong communicators and collaborators. And for some kids, that comes easily. For some kids, that's really hard and we saw that last year. We saw kids who jumped right into the talking and discussing and collaborating. We saw kids that was hard for, and that's why this year that's a focus for us. And we know it's really important. There's a lot of research that supports that makes a difference in learning math. And not, gone are the days where we just sit and solve problems by ourselves. What the research shows us is that when you are working collaboratively, when you are talking about your math, you are learning at a much deeper level. And so John Hattie's research shows us that. National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, this is a big practice that they have written about and talked about needs to be in our math classrooms. Action three, using assessments to prioritize learning. Our IM materials come with lots of different types of assessments. And the Weasbuck teachers actually did the whole presentation about this, right? They told you the most wonderful example of what a difference it can make when you're using those materials to really look at student learning and adjust your instruction. So because of that impact we saw, all of our school improvement plans are focused on how our staff are really diving into those assessment pieces, especially when they're in a year two. They know the materials better. And last, focusing our interventions on students most in need and creating instructional coherence. We've done work here too. Our middle school coaches worked with Scott Chatterster, middle school director. They've redesigned the math lab. And so it's going to really have some new focus with fluency development. It's really addressing some unfurnished learning components. I also want to say our special education team worked, we have what's called like some self-contained math classrooms. We call direct math. And they worked with Scott Chatterster to design, what does this programming look like? IM look like for our students that are in those classrooms? How do we make some adjustments to it to really meet those students' needs? So that's been a big lift and really positive feedback from them. And lastly, our elementary coaches recognize we've got our tier one in place, our core. We need to look again at what we're doing for those kids who needed targeted support. We have things in place, but we want to go back and look at that again and see if there's things we need to add to that to strengthen that work. All right. Happy to take any questions?
Board, any questions? First question I have is on the DI. That is kind of intervention, that's not for everybody?
Everybody gets it, but it, it, it does work on exactly what our students' needs. We call it an intervention as well because it brings them up to grade level with closing that gap between students who aren't at grade level and students who are at grade, grade level and students are below grade level. It does serve as an intervention to bring them up to grade level.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to understand the, the recommendation to not use Bookworms for that.
Yeah, because in the upper grades, this book only goes kindergarten through third grade and it's all about the foundational skills. And so, and when we talk about third grade, it's really the very beginning of third grade. There was another book that they had that's really for fourth and fifth grade. And it's a, it's a really different approach. It's not about targeted foundational skills. It's about reading books and studying the vocabulary and the fluency. And so the materials that the American Reading Company had, the supplemental toolkit, did that exact same thing and they felt like it did it better.
And it complements the?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I forgot to make, I never, it's a bad habit, I never thank you guys. Like some of my fellow board members always say, thank you. But your enthusiasm and excitement today is, you know, probably the highest I've ever seen it when you've been presented. That's very cool. And I, and I, I trust and I hope that it's the same in the buildings for the teachers. Can you, I had this question in my mind when the Weasbuck teachers talked about it. Could you describe kind of what a cooldown is, how that works? You know, I know what it means in cross-country, I don't know what it means.
Yep, so envision half sheet of paper with maybe one or two questions that are just about what they learned that day. And at, the students maybe take max three to five minutes maximum. Teachers can collect them and quickly scan it and get a sense of, got it, doesn't got it, you know? And I need to help them.
It's almost like an end of the period quiz.
Yeah, they're often called in the educational world, exit tickets. You finish it as you're exiting the class. The, the little name that IM gave it was cooldown.
And?
Because they have a warm-up at the beginning of the lesson and a cooldown at the end.
Well, that, that is helpful, so thank you. I should know the answer to this question, but the FastBridge, we did once already?
Yes.
We do it three times, right?
Correct.
So when, when do we do that again?
We do that right before winter break for the second time.
And that, those results where we saw those marked increases, that was FastBridge, right?
Correct. And those results were from fall of last year and hot off the press fall this year.
Yeah, and so now as this, as we get maturity and some of the data, we'll be doing different data points, right? Like you'll look at the next one, you'll look at what, when the most recent one was and what a year ago was.
Exactly, exactly. Because when you look at our dashboard right now and you pull up any of the FastBridge scores, you pull up the little more data, it's a little sparse because we just started. But we're going to have a lot more bars coming up soon.
Very good, that's, okay, thank you. Julie?
So I will take Dave's cue. First of all, thank you, this was just a really good presentation. Not only in terms of the content you provided and walking us through and just seeing the thoroughness of the whole process, but also in some of those results. So I have another question on training, which was my question from last time. Remember when you and I talked about Bookworms once? You mentioned that this was different than the way you were taught when you were in school. And so, you know, I can imagine it's really hard to learn how to teach it a different way. So do you feel like you have the resources or the, the staff has the resources they need for professional development? Whether it's in like hours for institute days or external resources? Do you feel like you have what you need?
I think we have some great resources in place. The first resource I would say first and foremost, that's the most impactful is the coach. The fact that we have one person dedicated to this work and supporting the teachers is the most impactful. Now, the fact that we limited our support to K2 this year makes that more doable. That was a learning lesson from the IM experience. The coaches there said the cold rollout, K5 made it hard for them to get everywhere. So we were really specific with K2. Second, the board did approve funds for professional learning. So in, we utilized some of those funds actually last Friday in bringing in some folks from another school district that have been implementing Bookworms for our, our staff to hear from. Those are two. The third is the board approved some funds for substitutes and has supported those permanent substitutes, the building as well. So I would say those three funding sources really make a difference for us.
Fun fact, the teachers that came in to work with our teachers came from a district with a superintendent named Dr. Kyle.
Yeah, that is a fun connection.
Is that, is that the coach you're talking about, the coaches?
Yes, it was two coaches from another school district that came to work with our entire kindergarten, first and second grade team on Friday.
I'm going to come back to, I think, your question and, and just ask team to kind of help with this. So I, I think there are phases to implementation and training, right? There are definitely, and I think Melissa mentioned it on the chart, right? There are just some, some absolute foundational understandings that everybody has to have to be able to implement. But then there is a very practical reality that teachers move at different paces, right? Some are like, you give them a little bit of training, they're ready to go. They were probably ready to go before they even got to the training on the first day. And so, you know, teachers like, like students need differentiated levels of support. That's where I think that coaching is so important. Because it recognizes, you know, to, to the individual teacher or group of teachers exactly what they need, right? Do they need additional time, direct support? Do they just need somebody to come in the class and watch them? Do they need somebody to teach while they watch and then, you know, it, it connects? So I, I just, I, I can't overstate, I think, how important that like on-demand kind of differentiated model of support is candidly as, you know, as we get closer to middle school decision point around ELA and resources. Just fair warning, we're going to have that coach conversation at the middle school and ELA as well. We have a middle school math coach, we don't have the ELA coach. And, and I think as we get closer to implementation, that has been so critical to success of a program. That's not, you know, compared to some of the other lifts, that's not like astronomically big lift, but it is a resource that I think we're going to have to have a conversation about.
Thank you, Melissa. Quick question. So for grades three through five, they're doing the shared reading block currently. I was under the impression that some of the classrooms have decided to go ahead and jump in full speed. And so then what are they doing for that DI block?
Yeah, the, they are utilizing materials we already have. And so even the DI block as it's written is about reading in a small group, books. And so that's actually really familiar to our teachers in the intermediate grades because they already were doing some small group instruction with books. And so, so they are continuing to do the same methods they've done in the past. But I'm also going to say this as well. They are also, the shared reading block is also taking longer. I think it's dipping into the DI, the DI time because it's the first time these kids are getting it and it's new content, so.
And then for those teachers who haven't jumped into the ELA block, they're just using what they have been using?
In the past, yep. So it's the same aligned standards. Everybody has to do the same learning standards.
Thank you. And then when, for both reading and math, when you meet weekly with the coaches, what, I'm just curious what length of time that is? Like how much classroom time are we or?
Yes.
Student time are we taking?
Two and a half hours for each group.
And that directly cuts into classroom time? It's not like partially after-school time, it's directly?
It's during the school day.
Okay. So I, when I was looking through this, actually was wishing that Melissa could see my smile and my excitement because I was incredibly excited. And I, I'm not a reading teacher, but just a thought that I had that I will share. Prior to COVID, we were seeing some declines in like SAT scores, ACT scores. And I really think that that is probably due to 10 years prior to that making changes in the reading program. And I, I really think that this, like 10 years from now, we may be seeing some nice improvements. I, I could be completely wrong, but that's my thought.
Yeah, I want to add on to that. So one of the shifts that is in Bookworms is it's raising the complexity of the text level for all students. And so all students are receiving this grade level reading and research shows they rise to it, so.
I think it's great. Oh, so I was very, very excited. And then, well, it's a technical, I'm, I'm just going to be excited, thank you.
Any other questions, board members? John?
I would just like to come back to the, the coach issue. Are these full-time teachers in our school buildings?
Correct.
And how did they get to be a coach?
Yes. For, in terms of the reading coach group, 75% of that group has been longtime veterans. longtime veteran teachers in our district and they were called reading specialists. So they mostly worked with small groups of students. And so, number of years ago, the district recognized that the idea of coaching was, um, really powerful. And each school worked and to determine amongst their reading specialist, who should really serve as the reading coach at that point. And so now we've had some new people hired on as we've had retirements as well, so. But it's, the group has always been existing teachers within the district. They were a classroom teacher and they've moved into that role.
So they're basically a peer that's moved a little bit ahead of the rest of them?
Yeah, and have some different expertise or some different interest. You know, in fact, um, I'll say too, we've had come, some of our coaches in the district become administrators in the district. In fact, one sits in my department, Scott Chatterster, he was a math coach in the district when we added that at the middle school. He now sits in my department. So some people who are really interested in leadership take, um, this kind of role.
To me, a key element of success here is enthusiasm by the participants and I, I see that.
Yeah, you had the opportunity to see the coaches talk about it at CAC, yep.
Anyone else? Brett?
Yeah, two quick questions first off. Thank you. It's great to see the results so quickly. Um, I guess two, one kind of seeking confirmation or just a reminder for maybe for all of us and then a question. So I know we've shifted to Bookworms, but kind of below that foundationally, we've pivoted from kind of an old philosophy of what ELA instruction is to a new, more research-based, so I think it was balanced literacy.
Correct.
Shifting to-
Well done.
Some things I remember shifting to the science of reading, which is more built around phonics. Is that right?
Yes, that is one component and that is often the component that is only emphasized. The science of reading also entails reading complex text. It also entails building knowledge. And so our units of study are, um, wrapped around common topics that build knowledge for our students and then it's around evidence-based reading and writing.
So I guess underscoring all of this activity and result is really a shift philosophically? And then secondly, can you kind of paint a picture for what daily small group instruction looks like within the classroom? Cause we don't have, do we have multiple teachers, aides walk around the classroom?
Yep.
How does, what does that look like?
Yep. So when it is the DI block, what happens is the whole grade level has it scheduled at exactly the same time. And this lets us maximize the amount of people and our reading people are in there at that exact same time too. So we give that assessment and we look at that staircase and then the teachers group all of the students at the grade level. Um, they work together with, and look at all of the first graders and we put all the like first graders together to receive those lessons by that teacher. And so there's a fifteen-minute lesson that comes from here. And then students do fifteen minutes of independent reading and they do fifteen minutes of their workbook assignments. And so there's all good, there's gonna be a little shuffling around of kids. We're gonna be starting this really soon because they just went through the training. So there may be kids who are going from one first grade classroom to another for the whole forty-five minutes and they have to bring their workbook with and their independent reading book with, um, into the other classroom. Does that help?
Yeah. So it requires more movement of kids out, outside of their room?
Could.
Which is not like what traditional education looks like?
Yes.
Chris, it's fair to say the, adjust, some of the adjustments in the contract with the collective bargaining agreement and some changes you made in the block have kind of helped to create the ability for that to happen?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's certainly removed roadblocks, especially with aligning the specials and then the insu- like the maximized instructional time within that is allowed for open blocks, so everybody has the same block, which is what Melissa alluded to, yes.
All right, thanks. All right, uh, that concludes our two reports. Thank you very much. We actually now will enter, uh, our section for public comment. We have one tonight. Um, yeah, let me read the preamble and then we'll, we'll get into that, maybe a microphone, figure a microphone thing out.
Yeah, we'll, we use, uh, Mr.-
You can actually just bring Connie up to the table and call her if you want.
So, uh, "Thank you for taking the time to share your feedback and thoughts focused on our students, school, district, and community. It's the board's practice not to directly discuss communication from the community until the context is understood and information explored. It's not our intention to signal a lack of interest and we appreciate your understanding. Depending on the number of people signed up to speak during public comment, Board Policy two dot two three zero enables the time per speaker to be reduced from three to two minutes, allowing more people to share their perspectives. Tonight, we will not do that. To maintain confidentiality, the board asks that any matters concerning personnel or students be communicated to the board privately. When we meet, it's important that we treat each other with kindness and respect. We set an example for our schools and desire to honor that by being courteous in our public comments. Let's work together to lead with positive intent so that our democratic process reflects the best of our community. To help us follow up with needed, please include your name and if you're a resident of the district. To ensure everyone has a chance to speak, Ms. Kullvitz will raise her hand when fifteen seconds remain as a reminder to wrap up your thoughts. At the end of our agreed time, I'll respectfully ask you to let the next speaker begin. Thank you for investing time to attend our meeting tonight and share your thoughts and encouragement for our district." So Connie Schmidt, welcome.
Thank you, hi.
Hi.
Um, so I'm Connie Schmidt. I was a teacher in District 200 for twenty years, a resource teacher at Bauer, and I am a resident of the district and a taxpayer. And I sent a communication to board members via email. I have extras if there are staff members here who didn't receive it and you would like a paper copy, I'm happy to leave them. Three quick points I wanted to bring to you. Diesel buses are bad for the air, for our students' health, and for the health of our staff and community. Clean energy evolution is here, electric vehicles are the way of our future, and there is both federal and state funding, federal and state funding available if we should choose to apply for them. So the health issue, diesel particulate matter, airborne pollutants, I hope we all know how very dangerous they are for our children. One of the top bad things they cause is asthma. One of the things we do to treat asthma is give them steroids. One of the things we see as a result of that is destruct, commonly is some destruct, disruptive classroom behavior from children. So it affects our schools, both the children who are impacted as well as those in the rooms with them. Clean energy, there is a transition happening. It's in progress. Just in Will County, Lion Electric opened and they are going, they are producing electric buses. So there will be a supply available here, right next to DuPage. Um, other school districts around Illinois are applying for these grants that I will mention. And sooner or later, our conference events for sporting or athletic events could be determined on what schools have electric infrastructure for visiting buses. It's coming to District 200, I'd love us to be in the forefront. There is both federal and state funding available. I've been working with ELP, Environmental Law and Policy Center for about eight months now. We have had two meetings with superintendents from the district, some people have commented the last one, District 200 descends somewhat. Um, there's a brand-new round of federal funding starting, it was released today, tomorrow. It'll open up. So there will be federal funding announced. And the VW bus settlement is the IEP funding, that is ongoing now here in Illinois and we can apply for that. Um, on the, on what I sent you, there's some links you can click on to find out more information. I am happy people know how to get ahold of me. I'm happy to steer you to, uh, people who can be guiding experts in this. And, um, I hope for our health of our kids, our communities. I hope for our tax dollars with reliable vehicles requiring less maintenance and for the impact on our, our future, I hope we'll think about moving to electric transportation. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I know, I practiced. Can I leave this? Would anybody like him or not bother? Okay.
Oh, wait, I finished this up, sorry. I was ready to walk out the door, sorry. Okay, um, there be no further action to come before the board in an open session. Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
No motion.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy, second. Second by Mr. Rutledge, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting's adjourned, thank you.